Okay, I'd like to bring the October twenty second Board of Ed. Um, meeting to order. Uh, at seven nineteen P M. Sorry for the second one. Sixty six, signing in. Let's do. Doctor Will, do we have any acknowledgements?
Yes, um, we do. The boys soccer team. The boys, uh, middle school soccer, I'm sorry, the boys middle school cross country team won their league championship. So congratulations to the boys. Middle school.
That's awesome. That it?
That's it.
That's it? Okay, um, any additions to the agenda? No minutes to approve, so we'll move on to public participation. The members of the town Board of Education welcome members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the board and the administration may respond to comments starting point of information. However, in consideration of those in attendance and in an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting set. Do we have anyone who would online who would like to publicly participate tonight? Why once? Twice? Okay, we will close public participation. Uh, Mr. Bodie correspondent?
We have two emails come in, uh, one concerning gifted and talented classes. Questions about that and another come in about lighting on a pathway on the backside of the school.
Great. Points of information, when anyone on the board like to speak at this time?
I'll raise my hand verbally. I just, I'm all over the place, so I don't know how to work this thing. Um, just to, uh, the second piece of communication from the public regarding the, um, the, um, the, the pathway, the, the, the lit up pathway. I'm sorry, everybody. I am going on a few weeks here dealing with whatever I'm dealing with, so bear with me. Um, uh, we were leaving, you know, we were leaving a high school football game a couple of weeks ago. And Mr. McCluskey, you know, I was talking with him after the game, you know, we're some of the last people in, in, in the stadium. And there's, you know, three younger students, uh, three, you know, gentlemen, boys that are, uh, leaving from the high school to go to that back path back there. Uh, and to enter that neighborhood, because that's where one of the boys lived. Um, and I just want to shout out Mr. McCluskey because, you know, he, he asked the parent to confirm with, uh, him that they got home safely. Um, because again, it is a dark path and you don't know what's going on down there. And so, um, so I think it is a fair discussion to have. I'm not sure if we can have that full discussion tonight and come up with a solution tonight, obviously, but, um, it did come up as of, I mean, a few weeks ago. Where, you know, there's, there's, there's children walking, you know, from the school to that path. And I think it's a good, it's, it's, it's good to mention it. It's good to bring it up and I appreciate the email we received. So just in case anybody was wondering, again, there was an example, just as of a few weeks ago of, you know, one of our staff members making sure that, you know, these students got home safely. Um, just because again, it's just a dark area down there. And so, um, you know, I'm sure there's case after case of sort of situations like that happening. So just wanted to, uh, just wanted to, you know, point that out.
Thank you. Yeah, that email just came in today, so, um, why don't we let the superintendent take a look at it? And if it's something that we need to address, we can probably add it to, um, an agenda further down the line. Um, unless anybody else wanted to add anything to the meet.
I just want to add, if, I don't know if that's, you know, town responsibility or responsibility probably looked into in that regard.
Yeah. Take a look at that one, please, Dr. Will.
I will.
Okay, um, anybody have any other points of information?
You know, I just like to say thanks for all the people who have, have been, you know, uh, on the Board of Education for the last two years. Who might not be running again or moving on to different things, living paths of life. So I just appreciate everybody, you know, interacting and helping me learn the ropes and, uh, just communicating and speaking, being together, making decisions for the town. So thank you.
Ditto. I agree, Brian.
I wonder. Um, I was really excited to hear the acknowledgement for the middle school cross country team. And I just wanted to congratulate, uh, those young athletes. Um, and it was great to see the post online. They had because it was a variety of sixth, seventh and eighth graders that were there that took them all the way. So it's pretty impressive feat for all of our student athletes. And then, you know, we have some other of our, our high school teams going further on, so wish them all best of luck.
Somebody else? Okay, moving on then to our student representative reports, Camilla and Angela, you got for us tonight?
That's right. The Talon High School is having a homecoming Saturday, this Saturday, October twenty fifth. And our official theme is the fall harvest. And Angela and I have also reached out to other clubs like Smith Health Science in Yearbook. About any concerns that they might have about their clubs that they could talk to us about.
Um, and then we met with Mr. Poland on Monday about smart passes in particular, and we're hoping to meet with them roughly about once a month. Um, continuing on, and he said that, um, lengthening the time was definitely, um, an option that he's willing to support. We're just gonna wait until the end of quarter one, so we can look at some data and make sure it's a good solution. And then next Monday, the twenty seventh, student council's meeting with Smith to talk about penny worries coming up.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for all the work that you guys put into homecoming. Very excited. Saturday, my son will be attending, so, uh, that'll be fun and, uh, great job. Bringing, um, your concerns about smart fast to the principal and, uh, sounds like you had a good conversation and keep, uh, keep us updated. Okay, uh, committee and liaison reports, policy.
We met today. Uh, our last policy meeting, um, for this term. And we went over the school calendar that'll be coming, gonna be going on the second board agenda. Next month, so the end of the month.
Okay. Uh, correct.
We met today and go further, uh, into the, the N I S C report. Um, with their, um, upcoming visit in March, so we discussed that.
Uh, Brian, we do not have communications, right?
Correct.
And Dan, you gave, um, F F C last week, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and we have no negotiations at this time. Uh, Chairperson's Report. Okay, so I normally do not do a chairperson's report when I'm the acting chair, but I think I would have Tony blessing tonight to read vice chairperson's report. And I just want to take a moment and thank this board for the last two years of our term. And the time that you put in volunteering for our schools and for our community. Um, Katie and Dan, we will miss you. Um, it has been great to get to know you. You have been intelligent professionals who have brought a lot to the board. Um, and I thank you very much for your service. Um, Bill and Brian, I'm excited to continue working with you for the next two years. Um, really happy that we'll still, we'll still be together and I really appreciate what we do very much. Uh, Reenie, good luck to you on your candidacy for the town council and wish you the best of luck. Dana and Jayden, same to you. Um, hopefully you'll be back with us in the next two years and I wish you guys the best of luck too. This is not an easy job that we all have volunteering. Um, it definitely, it definitely takes a toll. We've been through a lot together. Um, you know, Reenie, you've had so many years of service, Dana, you have so many years of service. Um, Jayden and I, not quite as many as you guys, Tony, um, as well. I want to thank him for being our chair these last two years and, um, for working alongside me. And supporting us. I'd like to thank our new student reps. Um, you guys have this really kind of cool opportunity where you get to see the new board come in and, and all the changes that happen. From the old boards, the new board and a lot of things that stay the same. So, um, I'm excited to keep working with you and I can tell that you guys are really gonna continue to offer us a lot. And thank you Lisa for everything that you have provided us these past two years. And thank you, Dr. Willett, for being an excellent superintendent and for all the guidance that you have given us these past two years, especially me in this leadership role. So thank you very much. And then you got everybody. Okay, so superintendent's report, K one, School Resource Officer.
All right, so, um, this is an update to the, um, to the process of these school resource officer. We, um, unfortunately, we were unable to meet, uh, Mr. Foley, myself, Mr. Robinson, who we're going to try to meet this week. But, uh, there were reasons we couldn't. So we're going to be getting together next week to attempt to finalize a way forward. I think that the council and the leadership of, uh, Boarding Council have given us a clear message that, you know, that this is something that, um, it has an element of a green light to it. So when I meet with Mr. Foley, uh, we'll talk about resources that may be coming in, um, the direction of the district. Uh, and we'll talk about the process of using those resources to, um, host, post and fill the job of S R O. So my, I wish to be able to come to this meeting tonight, give you more, but my impression is that, um, we will be able to hire, um, an S R O. In the next few weeks, hopefully between now and November fifteenth, when, um, you know, when the state police segue back to an earlier structure they had. Uh, because Mr. Brennan will be coming back from a deployment. Mr. Brennan, you know, has some seniority over Mr. Shepherd. Mr. Shepherd works for Troop C, so there's some possible bouncing. And then we'll have a little bit of a window there, a period of time where there's a transition. Um, but somewhere in that span of November to December, I think we'll be able to place, and S R O will be advertising for it as soon as possible. As soon as we have that meeting and I know that there's funding available, then we can advertise. And when we advertise, you know, hopefully within the next few weeks, somebody will apply or people will apply and then we can interview and get that placed by, by the time that transition occurs. Um, and we will obviously get some assistance there from Corey Brennan, I'm sure when he comes in. He's been in the schools a lot. Um, Troop C may help us, you know, in continuing Trooper Shepherd. Uh, so I think we'll have a good transition period. People will help us as we look to place the S R O. And I'm confident, you know, we will find someone in the span of November, December for that permanent role. The difference is that, um, Talon would be hiring a municipal officer instead of a state trooper. And that's, I think, where they're going to want to go. So I, I haven't had the meeting, so I can't tell you for sure. And I was hoping to, to be able to do that, but that's the direction I think that they are going to go. It's the municipal officer structure.
So difference.
Uh, they don't report to the, well, they are not a Connecticut State Trooper. But they do report to the administrative officer at Troop C, I'm sorry, at the resident troop. So they work as a police officer with all police powers. They're armed. But they're technically paid directly by the town. Uh, and that would be different because the trooper would be paying on the town with. And they report to the administrative trooper of the resident troop, but they are, they are not part of that. So they are deployed solely in the schools and they work ten months solely in the schools. And they're paid for ten months solely in the schools. And they will have the summers off and the school, uh, student breaks off. Um, they don't do any additional work in the summertime. Uh, and they work kind of like a constable. So it's a full fledged police officer, but they are basically stationed in and only for the schools for the duration of the school, um, year. And then, you know, a trooper would be all year long. Somebody would have to pick up. You know, if you're gonna pick up ten months of a trooper, someone would have to pick up the other two months. The troopers are more expensive. Um, or a bit more. So that's, uh, it's a structure a lot of towns use. They have municipal officers across. So we actually have been using that structure since we were limited to two twenty-four hour people. Now we can hire one full time forty hour person.
Any questions or comments? Um, I guess my only question would be, I mean, apologies if you said this, but we won't have a, you know, a gap in coverage.
No.
At all, really?
Well, I mean, no, we shouldn't. I mean, right now, we, uh, Trooper Shepherd. You know, he is working in schools. Sometimes he will have to go and, uh, do a report. Or, uh, do a gun permit. So not any more than the gaps that we have for that. In the transition, and when Corey comes back, uh, Mr. Brennan, Trooper Brennan. Um, there may be a week or two there where one or the other or someone is covering shifts or whatever. So there'll be transitions, but we're not gonna be, uh, without somebody working in schools. You know, the decision to go more on the municipal officer side, it's a fairly recent development. And unfortunately, just weren't able to have that meeting prior to this meeting. Otherwise I could give it to you exactly as it was. But right now, I think within ninety percent accuracy, I can say that the direction this is going is that municipal officer direction.
Okay.
Just, uh, just, just for clarification, this still would be covered under those excess funds that the town had?
Yeah, the differential.
Or something?
Yeah, the, uh, we have some great troopers.
At the last meeting of.
Great troopers in town and you have a experienced trooper that have, um, a trooper with more years, the transitioned out, trooper with last years, transitioned in, and that residential is what they're gonna use for the municipal officer.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Willett, for that update. Um, we have no new business, so we'll move on to old business and N one is the task contract.
Right, so you remember that, uh, last week you had your first session, uh, and exposure to the contract? The contract has been available to you. The contract does not get moved forward finalized until after the board approves it. And which, at which point I can then say that you officially did that and we can publish it for the council. The council will have to do the final vote on the contract. So once you endorse it, it becomes, you will have endorsed it, the task will have endorsed it. Now I can actually show it around because negotiations is technically complete at that point and it goes to the council. Um, so you have access to the red line and the, um, overall stats on it. I did put those out there, but there is a, um, agenda item for that here too. Just to go over some basics, um, the state of Connecticut average for settlements. And the way it goes is it's rolling because not everybody's in negotiations at the same time. But the state of Connecticut has a very required, you know, a very scripted process you go through. A certain date, negotiations have to open by, a certain date they have to go to mediation by, certain date they have to go to arbitration by. So there's rolling, uh, rolling number of, uh, towns and districts in negotiations at any given time. So of the thirty-eight districts, thirty-eight, thirty-nine districts that were in negotiations during the period of time that we were. The average settlement was nine point nine two percent in this range of time. The settlement for this one is nine point four nine percent. So the settlement that your negotiation team got is lower than the average settlement of all settlements in Connecticut during the same negotiation period. So that's a good thing. Um, it shows that your team did a good job keeping things modest and under control. It's got a three-year duration, you know, twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-nine. Um, it's got updated wording to match all the other bargaining units. So there were some cleanups, uh, insurance premiums for health, uh, over the period of the contract go up by two, uh, one percent. Um, one thing to keep in mind is their percentage share where the contract is up there as it is. So it's one percent may seem modest as an increase to an insurance, um, line. But, um, they are higher right now than the teachers are, so they're going up. Um, and that the, uh, bereavement language was modified to allow for, um, them to have more discretion. Because sometimes a person other than your direct parent is the person who raised you. So if we try to limit it to say someone's mother and father and so on, if the mother and father weren't in the picture, but somebody's aunt was and you don't list aunt. So the bereavement language has been, um, widened to be, you know, more gracious. And so that was a change too. But that doesn't cost the district anything. Uh, so these are just some of the basic things, um, updated language for work-related injuries, just cleaning up language in there. Uh, so over the span of the contract, you know, you've got a contract that is lower than the average settlements right now. And cleans up language, has reasonable insurance because they're already kind of high. Um, and I think overall it was a great job on part of your negotiations committee. And they're a great group of people, a great unit. They're all awesome administrators. So we talked a little bit about that before. You have a lot of wisdom and experience in this group. So it's great that we're able to retain them. Total cost is two hundred thousand nine twenty-seven.
Um, and you guys know, I always like to add a little personalization when we talk about contracts. Um, I think for administrators, I think we're well aware of the business that is our school district. And these are the people that run our school district, right? So they're doing many of the, uh, the heavy hitting items, writing curriculum and reporting out to the state. And running the day-to-day operations of our school and working closely with Dr. Willett on budgets and, um, so much more. Um, but there's also the personal side of it. Uh, I think that we are very lucky. We have a very experienced workforce of really highly talented administrators. And most are veterans of our district. They have really served the town and our schools well. We, we want to keep them. We've invested a lot of time, um, in their development. And we, we want to retain them and of course we want to retain them at fair compensation rates. Um, you know, as we all know, I've gotten, I've had the opportunity to spend a lot of time in, in the schools volunteering. There's so many personal things that our administrators do. They really do work very closely with our students and our families. Um, it's also a business thing, but they are in, you know, our P P Ts and our five oh four meetings. They were meeting with parents or meeting with staff. They've taken on a lot of the duties that were done before by the team lead and we seem to have put more on them every budget cycle. Um, but they also, they're, they're recess, you know, and the younger grades. And sometimes they're even out playing at recess with the kids. They're, they're working closely with our P T O organizations. And I can tell you from experience that when we do a line item budget with them, they, they are very, um, they treasure every single penny and they're very careful about where those, where those buns are allocated. Um, they are at all the P T O events and then some at our schools and they assist with setup and cleanup wherever they can. They, you know, I've seen them putting de-icing down, you know, when they've had to because somebody just slipped, you know, a drop off in the morning. They're walking in young students who are having a really hard time and some of them are outside anyway, greeting students. But then they're, they're taking care of the ones that they know that they need a little extra help. They are carrying vomit buckets in the hallway sometimes. So they give a sick student, you know, they are the first people on the scene when there's any kind of emergency, big or small. Um, they're, they, you know, uh, are in our cafeteria doing those duties, which are very difficult at the middle school and the high school. And our adminis, some of our administrators are in both of those. So there's just, there's, there's a lot that they do. But when I was thinking about it, one thing really came to mind. And that is that, you know, every time I've seen an administrator in the hallway during the day of school, they're often in like a speed walk, right? Because they're either going somewhere that needs them or they're, were just somewhere that needs them and now they're rushing back from a meeting. So they're in a speed walk. And if you're a staff member or volunteer, you'll get like a quick kindness of gallant, you know, something like that. But I will tell you that every time a student stops them for a fist bump or a handshake or asks a question, those people stop in their tracks. And they are present for our kids. I have never, ever seen an administrator speed walk past, past a kid that was trying to get their attention. So, um, I'm just really grateful for the people that work in our schools. And, uh, just wanted to, to take a moment to express some of those things that they do for us every single day. With that, any more discussion before we make a motion to move this to board action, hopefully? Anyone? Okay, I will entertain a motion to move this to board action.
The motion to move the Board of Ed and the task bargaining unit agreement to action.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Reenie? Aye. Brian?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Dana? Hi. Katie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jayden?
Aye.
And I also an aye, so that moves to board action N one. Okay, so next is N two, obsolete and surplus equipment.
So, uh, as you know, we have a policy for, um, processing obsolete and surplus equipment. Uh, in this case, we either have Jeff, you know, identified some items here that we would like to turn over to the town. And then the town can do as they see fit with them. Sometimes they'll sell it, sometimes they'll trash it. Um, but when something is not working or is obsolete for our own purposes, you know, that's how we handle it. So there is a motion involved in designating these items as obsolete and moving them over to the town. Uh, if you see second page, there's a list of, um, there's a list of books that also at this point can be turned over to the town. So there's some technological equipment that's old or broken. Um, there's a laminator, there's an in-focus projector, um, there's monitors to plug into anything. Um, and then there's these, uh, books. Journeys is an old, uh, program that was used in the district. Uh, these books, a lot of these books, uh, were given to us as part of our programming sort of the thing years ago. And they're not really needed at this point. We have offered, you know, everyone that is in an education side to stuff. Um, nobody wants these, um, they're a part of the old program. They're outdated. So they are going to be turned over to the town and towns have decided to trash them. Or they can leave them away in the library, something like that. But, uh, this is two or three generations ago of programming. A lot changes in that time.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Why are there so many dictionaries being? The laundry given away?
Well, they, there's nowhere, we don't, uh, they're associated with the program. We don't need them. Everything's electronic now. Um, and they're basically just in storage. They don't use them. So they would be turned over. We did try to see if others wanted them. Um, but people don't want them. I'm not even sure the library would want them. So that's, that's kind of where we're at because they, um, it's not, not what I grew up with, but it's not what they're doing anymore. Everything is electronic. You can look up everything electronically.
No, no, I understand.
They don't, they just don't use the parent printed material.
I just didn't know.
Maybe we could ask our student reps, huh, when did you last use a paper dictionary?
Booked green.
Okay, so. That would be about saying the program, yeah. Started and that's basically why they just don't.
Okay.
Are there, um, is there an opportunity at all for our homeschooling families to obtain any of this? I mean, I know that we don't.
We'll make sure, or to the town, they'll do whatever they want with them. Sometimes we, you can put them out in boxes that what would sometimes happen is during programs, these will be put out in boxes for people to grab. We did do a little bit of that, you know, at home. I mean, if you're at the open houses and things, some of these materials were open for parents. If they wanted to take them, but none of, nobody took them. Like, nobody took the dictionaries, for instance. Uh, so we would put them out, they have, they should put them out.
For the younger schools.
And we helped, the library, uh, I think would be one place possibly, but I don't want to put that on them. I know they have, they have boxes already of stuff that people can take, so.
Oh, Birchford, Tom had, oh my goodness, the amount of books he had.
Yeah, that's.
He must have had literally thousands of books.
We, we tried to provide them to the families and people, but nobody wants them.
Yeah.
That and his lost and found.
They are older. I mean, granted, you know, like a, like a, um, a map, if you had a map from ten years ago, it's not accurate anymore. You know, there's terms in those that probably are not one hundred percent accurate after ten years. One hundred percent accurate after ten years. All right, let's move to the ones.
Can we um. We need to move this to board action, right? Do we need a second read on this?
Yeah, you don't have to, it's up to you whether you do second reads, but if you second read, it won't be.
Would anyone like to make a motion, move this to board action?
Yeah, make a motion to move the obsolete and surplus equipment list provided to us today to action.
Second. Any discussion? No? Great. Rini?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Ian?
Aye.
Jaden?
Aye.
I am an aye, so that is now N two, I think. Yes, N two. Okay, so board action N one, which is the task contract. Uh, do we blamage for that, Dr. Willett?
I do, yeah, I agree with it.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to accept the board of ed and task administrator bargaining unit agreement to be from, to be enforced from July first. Twenty twenty-six through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine.
Second. You, any discussion? No? Okay, Rini?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Ian?
Aye.
Jaden?
Aye.
I am an aye, that passes unanimously. Moving on to board action item N two.
Motion to determine all items included in this report as obsolete and/or in disrepair and to turn the identified items. Over to the town according to board policy thirty forty.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Rini?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Ian?
Aye.
Jaden?
Aye.
And I am an aye, that passes unanimously. Okay, that brings us to public participation. So comments must be limited to items on this agenda. You will have ten, two minutes.
Ten minutes.
Two minutes, two minutes. Uh, feeling very generous, sweetie. Um, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? For once? Twice? Close public participation. Points of information, would any board members like to speak at this time?
I will, just as a quick, thanks for, you know, everybody on the board, appreciate, you know, working together and that type of thing and it's, it's, you know, good luck going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I will second that. Thank you, Rini. Thank you, everyone, for. Uh, dealing with me while I was some remote and or just learning the ropes throughout the first year, second year, but it's been real, so thank you all. Um, you haven't seen the end of me, I'll, I'll still be around, but thank you all.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dan. Jaden?
Exactly what, what they just said, um, what Dan and Rini just said. I, I can't thank you all enough. I think this board, fascinatingly enough, I think we've proven that. You know, you can get stuff done and disagree with each other and to me, that's important, you know, and so. I'm really grateful for, for everybody in that room and, and Dan, don't feel bad about being virtual, I'm, you know what, you, you've done a great job, so. Um, thank you and Rini and, and Lisa, thank you for sitting next to me for the last two years and thanks for sharing the treats and, and sharing the laughs, so it's, it's, it's been a fun. Uh, two years with this, with this team and again, I, 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 I can't thank you all enough, so well done, well done.
Katie?
I, I won't belabor it because I don't really have anything different to say other than, you know, what Dan and Jaden and Rini have already said. But I just wanted to wish Dana and uh, Jaden and Rini really good luck in your races. Um, I think you're a great representative for the town and so I, I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't not say anything, so.
Yeah, go ahead, Dana.
It's been a good six years, so. Good luck to everybody, you know? All right. So the future is undecided. Uh, and uh, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Me? Just Brian. Did anybody do it, Bill?
Second it?
Second.
Aye, and I second that motion.
Second it?
Sure, Jaden.
You got it. Bill? Dana?
I'm Katie.
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jaden?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Good night, everyone.